Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible).
We do have a quorum. Director Rice has informed me that she might be a little bit late, so I guess she is. We'll proceed without her. I am going to open up for public comment again, but remember, you can't comment on anything on the agenda, okay? So if you've got something to say outside of the agenda, and that includes the agenda that we already did last time, I have a couple of slips here. We'll start with Laura Schwartz, and next up will be Ted Siegler.
Is it green light on?
What?
There. That green light. Okay. There's two green lights here. Okay. Anyhow, good morning. Yes, I was at the last meeting. Of course, we attend quite a few of them, as everybody knows, and good morning to everybody. And what I wanted to say in that one is that I applaud Vice President Farmer's efforts to keep us informed on what the EWS is costing us. We, as the ratepayers, really should know about that, and I applaud his efforts to try to -- for him trying to keep us updated of what's going on. Okay? And the thing is, regardless of how you feel about the plant, costs do matter, and we all should be aware and concerned. And I just listed a couple of things that we should consider. It's early, guys. Okay? Allocated overhead, all the time and the effort and the money that's been spent by our last general manager, the engineer, the staff, all of these costs. If you start adding them all up, we have legal counsel. We have the price of the plant and all of the interest. We have the price of the permits and all of the violations. We have highly paid, highly skilled operators. We have security bonds. This year it's 71,000. We have commission and decommission of the evaporation pond. We have advisors. We have consultants. We have lobbyists had. We have utility costs. We have renting of Baker tanks. We have hauling of salts, which is going to be a really biggie, and all the other unanticipated and anticipated costs. So I guess the other costs that we have, if we change it from an EWS, which was for existing customers only, and we change it to it can be used whenever, now we have to do a build-out reduction plan, which is going to cost us, after sitting for 21 months on that board, from $25 to $30 million. So the thing is, can we really afford this? And again, thank you, Mr. Farmer, for keeping us aware of the ongoing costs.
Thank you. Mr. Siegler, followed by Mr. Gray.
Good morning. During my 30-year career, 30-plus years in corporate finance, one of the guiding principles was to tell a meaningful story and accurate -- and an accurate story using business's financial data. I can't sit idly by when that principle's abused. At the meeting on the other, you know, last Thursday, a statement was made about the cost of the SWF under the rubric of informing the public. Far from informing, the comments seemed intended to inflame. There are at least three fundamental errors in this statement as presented. First, there was an implication that spending on the SWF is crowding out investment in wastewater infrastructure. Using monies from one enterprise to fund for the purposes of another would be illegal. Please do not perpetuate public confusion by making such statements. Second, of the $329,000 paid in January to PPB investments, 172,000 was pre repayment of principal. The costs of building the SWF have been fully accounted for. Repayment of principal is returning money that was loaned to the CCSD. It's not an ongoing cost. It doesn't add a penny to the cost of the SWF. The third is that the remaining 158,000 was a payment of principal, or of interest, I mean, which basically is renting funds from the people who provided them to us. This is properly a cost of ownership. However, the interest payment was for a period of six months. The amount that should be allocated to January is approximately $26,000. So of the $330,000 TPB payment, the amount that actually matches January's SWF cost is slightly over $26,000. That's what, 6%, 7% of the claim? Over the last year, the CCSD, and in particular you, the Board, have gone to great lengths to improve transparency and reduce tensions with parts of the Cambria community. Inflammatory statements rooted in financial illiteracy hurt that cause. I urge you to do your homework, get your numbers right, and tell the story with integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, followed by Ms. Dickinson.
Good morning. I have a brief comment to make, and it's truly not on any particular agenda item, but it was about, it is about meetings in general. I was struck after waiting for more than four hours through Thursday's meeting to speak on an agenda item on a rather short agenda, by how long it had taken to get to that point, and by the inconvenience that we were all put through, and most of us are coming back, which is pretty amazing, by the inability of this Board to get its business conducted in a timely fashion. I would urge you to go back over the video of that meeting and decide and figure out how much time was spent by Board members, by the public, by staff members explaining things, and ask yourselves, who is really using up the time? We have this clock here that I'm watching. I'm now a minute into my remarks, and I noticed that the people who speak here are all pretty good about not over, not using too much time. We have three minutes, and I think we've all been pretty well disciplined to observe that kind of a limit. Maybe my humble suggestion is maybe the Board should have something similar on its side, especially, especially for comments that Board members make that are explaining a position or even asking a question. A question should be asked really briefly. If there's a report to be made by, say, a committee chairman or by a staffer, that has to be somewhat long to explain things, that's fine, but I think your problem is not, you know, long-winded gadflies. It's people on the Board, and I'm not going to name any names, who want to make, want to share their feelings, give little sermons or long sermons, ask questions that are not concise, go on and on about explaining their position when two minutes could do what they do in 10. And I think it's getting out of hand, because now you're up to two meetings a month. You have, you've had to extend the meeting, and this is actually a great discouragement to public participation. People who want to speak before you do not want to have to wait and then come back the next day to speak. That's just my humble opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dickinson, followed by Ms. Heinrichs.
Well, that's rather amazing that a steering committee member of C4H2O finds that he can dictate our First Amendment. Rice, this isn't the first time that someone from that group has thought that they could do that. I object to it vehemently. He has no business, nor Mr. Siegler or any of the others, who wish to say that a member of the Board cannot speak or we, the public. And I'm sorry, we all had to wait for four hours while there was a huge item on the agenda on Thursday regarding low-income housing. That's the way it goes sometimes. Things take longer because of what may be on the agenda that is of importance to many members of the community. That's sorry. Sorry you had to wait, Mr. Gray, but that's just the way it goes. Regarding the four-and-a-half-year-now-built project, I recall, President Pearson, that not too long ago, you were concerned about the costs related to the EWS, because that is what it is. We do not have a permit for anything other than an emergency CDP for the Emergency Water Supply Project. If people want to refer to it, and have, and the district's changed its, the name, to the SWF, the Sustainable Water Facility, then I would suggest that the district look at a separate EIR for a separate project. That is not the project that will be coming before the Planning Commission whenever that day occurs. I also remind the Board, for those who probably aren't even aware of it, that the Department of Finance did do an audit on this county's, the amount they received from the DWR for several projects in the county. We were one of those for the Prop 84 funding. They had issues with the Cambria project, and their recommendations, this goes back to last year when they came out with the report, recommendations, A, monitor Cambria's efforts in complying with the Regional Board cease and desist order and modification of the plant. B, after plant modifications, require Cambria to test whether the new plant can produce the requisite 240 to 250 acre-feet of water over a six-month dry period and report the results of its testing to the district and to, that would be the Public Works, and to the Department of Water Resources. We haven't done that. We're nowhere near ready to do that. And when you look at the 25-plus inches of rain, and it's raining again, of course, today, we will not need this project for now going on a third year. If anybody thinks we need this project, they need to maybe go into insane asylum. I mean, this is ridiculous. This is absolutely ridiculous. And the cost to this community for this project, the $13.4 million loan, I would say have doubled and are continuing to grow. The lawsuit against CDM Smith, that's more money. But I'd like to see what you asked for, the costs associated to the EWS. I think you referred to it as the SWF. I can't go there, because that's not what this, this project is. And so for the district to have the audacity to change the name of it after they got the 4.3 million, or just prior to that, from the Prop 84 is rather, it's rather alarming. You're doing this, but there's 24 seconds left.
No. It's counting up now. That's how much you're over.
Oh, okay. I can read the clock. So, okay, thank you. Thank you, President Pearson, and thank you for being gracious enough to sometimes allow us a few more seconds. You know, that's a first for me, and I really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
You're welcome. Ms. Heinrichs?
I actually want to talk on the...
5E?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. Great. Save that time.
Do you have a public comment?
Yes.
Can we move in real fast? Comment?
Ms. Richards?
Good day. Okay. Gadfly here.[892.00][892.00](laughing). So since this doorway was opened about the discussion and the dialogue, I was not going to bring this up today, but since we have a public comment period and this is not on the agenda, I will bring it up to you. There's three documents online put out by C4H2O, and it's all these documents inside the Sustainable Water Facility, Part Two. And let's see. "At the Crossroads: Regular Coastal Development Permits As of June 2018." And the third one is "Call to the Cause: How We Can All Act Now to Secure the Regular Permit, Number Four." These documents are online, they're open to the public, and they state in one of the documents here, this is the newsletter out that goes out to members of C4H2O, "The SWF Subplant Cambria's Water Supply is Improving the Environment. Once the SWF receives a regular coastal development permit, it will pump 400 gallons per minute of potable water into the CCSD's reinjection well. About 250 GPM of the water reaches the CCSD drinking wells after 60-day travel time." This is not correct, and anybody who can actually read the regional's permitting process has confirmed that this is not correct. So this is the misinformation that C4H2O is currently pointing out to the public about how it's a successful project and that it's going to, it's bringing water. This is why people in town think we're drinking the actual product water from the EWS, which we are not. And on one of the other documents, this is, "We now have the EWS, and it functions well." This is the misinformation that people in my community are coming to me going, "But we're drinking the water. It's running right now, right?" Because they're getting this misinformation. The bottom line is, these documents, all three of them, which you can get online, which I'm more than happy to share with the community, is written by the Cambrians for Water Steering Committee, Tom Gray, Andy Picar, Mike Lyons, Clive Metrick, Mark Rocheford, and Cindy Seidel. These are issues that are very important and critical, and facts are the most important point here. And when you put out misinformation like this, it causes the community to freak out and panic. So I appreciate whatever the Board's doing, and this idea of locking us down from not having public comment or expressing this, trying to correct the data and the information here, is what C4 has been doing for years. They've been saying, "Oh, my gosh, you guys are talking." And then they don't even close us down now. They're trying to close the Board's dialogue down. So I am completely offended by this, that just happened here today. And by the way, when we determine who was actually talking too much after we review the tape, it's going to be surprising who was actually yakking the longest on the Board the other day. I respect your interaction and your dialogue, and I encourage as much dialogue and interaction as you all can have. I don't mind staying out here for four hours, because we all are trying to do the right thing by the community and go in a healthy direction. We have to have dialogue, and to shut dialogue down is where we get back to the business as usual, the way things used to be here. So thank you for all the work you've done. I know this is a difficult job for staff and the Board, and I appreciate everything that everyone's trying. I even like C4H2O. I got to tell you truthfully, I appreciate, they mean well. They're just misdirected, misinformed. Thank you so much.
I also have a comment form from Laurel Stewart, and she's just asking that the Historical Society and the Schoolhouse issue be put back on our agenda for March 14th meeting. So I'll, yes, I will make sure that that's done. We'll have a pros report. Thank you, ma'am, for reminding us. And Ms. Madrid, would you make sure that that comes up at our meeting at 2:30 this afternoon?
Yeah, I thought that was already scheduled to be on there.
Good. Thank you. All right. We will now continue with the adjourned meeting from the other day and go to Item 5E. Ms. Madrid, do you want to introduce this item, and then we have lots of public comment from...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. This item is to bring forward the upgrade permit item for the Sustainable Water Facility. It is an item that the Regional Water Quality Control Board had previously scheduled for June of 2018. However, they received a number of comments that they, so they pulled it off of their agenda so that they would have time to respond to those items. It's my understanding that the permit upgrades are basically the same, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Pavo, and he can provide any comments unless you have specific questions.
Okay. Thank you.
President Pearson, members of the Board, I don't really have a number of any, you know, real supplemental comments. I just want to, you know, remark that we've all reviewed the waste discharge requirements. I didn't look back in history, but the chief plan operators who have, you know, the primary responsibility for making sure that the district complies with those waste discharge requirements, and the rest of the team have looked on it, we have not prepared and don't anticipate preparing comments to submit at this point in time, but are certainly interested in both Board comments and public comments that we might hear today.
Okay. Very good. We'll go ahead with public comment then. We're going to start with Ms. Dickinson and then Crosby Schwartz.
I just turned mine in. I mean, are you doing these in order? I just turned it in now. There's got to be other people ahead of me.
Oh, you want, you want to delay a little bit? Okay. Crosby? And Mark Rocheford turned one in last time, but I don't believe he's here. So Mike Lyons will be next after Crosby.
Good morning, President Pearson, members of the Board and staff. This order is very comprehensive. It has a lot of facts and figures about pumping rates and flow and all that kind of stuff. As I was reading through this, though, it occurred to me that some of these numbers are not actual verified factual numbers. They're just estimates or engineering goals and so forth. And I think it's important, and it doesn't specify whether the information is verified or not in the report. I think it's important that you at least add notations where something is estimated and has not been verified, because once this gets issued, sort of becomes fact just by virtue of its being issued by the Board. For example, on page seven, says the project is capable of pumping up to 1 million gallons per day from well 9P7. That's a lot of water. I doubt that you can actually do that without lowering the water level in that area and drawing in seawater. I don't know even why they put that in, because that's not, the actual estimated pumping rate, if you're running at full capacity, is 852,000 gallons per day. Still pretty substantial, and I doubt you can actually do that without lowering the water level in that vicinity. Another thing that it states in here on, bear with me here, this is page eight, Item 21, time and hours of operation. Says the EWS typically operates eight hours per day, five days per week, for six months of the year, when drought conditions are most severe. Probably if the drought conditions are most severe, it'd be operating for more than eight hours per day. You'd be trying to get the most amount of water out of it. I don't know how you fix that, but, and we never have actually demonstrated that it even can operate for six months continuously. So something like that, it just needs to be reworded to reflect what actually is going to happen. And then the final thing, it's kind of a complicated issue, but the, this report states, for example, on page five, that the RO system is designed with a target recovery of 92%. I don't know if that's, that could have been verified when we were testing the system, but I've never actually heard that stated. It does make a difference in how much wastewater you have to dispose of. I'd like to see, like, have you check to see if that 92% efficiency was actually verified. And then the last thing that's really not stated in here is pretty important. This probably could go into Item 24 on page nine. That is, how much of the water that actually is injected into the aquifer is actually recovered by the district as drinking water? I use the figure of 65%, which is, was stated by CDM Smith a long time ago. I wish I could give you the name of the person that had stated that, but it's certainly not 100%. So even if you're injecting 400 gallons per minute, you're not getting 400 gallons per minute back. I think it, there should be some statement to that effect in here, because it sort of implies that you're actually getting 400 gallons per minute of drinking water. So I think some of these things need to be straightened out, and if you, if you can't verify these numbers, there should be a footnote simply saying that these numbers are estimates only, will be verified in the future, or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Hope everything's all right. I think we're going to be all right. I have prepared a couple of remarks on this subject of 5E, but indulge me just a moment to remind everybody on the subject that was spoken of, general comment, about a person from the board making an estimate, if memory is right, of $440,000 for the month of January as the cost of the EWS FWF. I think that's the figure that was thrown out. That's not important to me. What is important, that as a member of the public, hearing that, came up from his seat and repeated that figure. The member of the board who threw that figure out failed to mention that a good portion of it was for the six-month prepayment on the loan. And all I'm asking for is transparency. At that very point, we should have corrected that so that the information, misinformation doesn't get repeated. Now, on to my comments on 5E. About two and a half years ago, I sat here in this audience, in this very room, and there was a man here, a representative of the regional water board here. Hostility that he had towards our community and towards the district in general could have been cut with a knife. Very, very unfortunate. I did some research on this, and the reasons for this animosity were, yes, the tardy reporting and some physical and engineering changes that needed to be made to the EWS, but also a number of letters from opponents, some of whom are here today, and I claim they do not represent the majority of Cambrians. Our general manager and chief engineer recognize the need to improve the response to the physical questions of the regional board as well as to repair the relationship. The 2019, the 2019 staff report in front of you is proof that the district managers and the staff have done their jobs very well. This proposal is a very narrow one, addresses only the remaining issues of brine disposal and reporting, but moving this forward by voting yes is extremely important. Other issues such as endangered species and habitat will be addressed by other agencies down the road. Today, your unanimous vote will be a crucial step in the process of getting a permanent license for the SWF and ensuring our town's future.
Thank you. Ms. Heinrichs. Followed by Mr. Sigler.
Thank you. Thank you for this continued meeting. I'd like to address some points made in the staff report. Draw your attention to a couple of paragraphs. The report addresses the need to adjust the rate of water injection. The plant was unable to meet the 60-day requirement on its first tracer test, and at this point, the district could have held CDM Smith accountable. My understanding is that the contractor should have been required to bring the project into compliance at that point. However, instead, the rate requirements were changed to accommodate the plant's performance. That's in the paragraph on page two, addressing the tracer study. Next, the plant's operation history and the district's reporting issues under the violations history on page four. The CCSD has received numerous notices of violation, and it goes on that it should be noticed that the EWS was not operational during 2017 or 2018, and the CCSD has yet to demonstrate that it can meet all data requirements and reporting deadlines while the facility is operational. On page five, under California Environmental Quality Act, the reason that the regional board refers to the project as the emergency water treatment facility and not the SWF or sustainable water facility is, as they point out, because the changes the district has proposed in order to operate the plant day to day have not been examined or permitted and would require a new process. The board requires at least a new waste disposal requirement. With the addition of a surface water treatment plant in the proposal, I expect an additional supplemental EIR will be required. The Coastal Commission has identified the entire area in which it was built as environmentally sensitive habitat. The damages done there will require mitigation as well. I will leave it to others to discuss fully the new requirements. John Roke, of the Water Board, as of February, was not yet satisfied that the district is making adequate progress on resolving the impoundment pond issues. He mentions, among other concerns, that the schedule for final pond closure was August 2018. Even given the difficulties that have been encountered along the way with this project, adding an additional year or more to the closure time is not reasonable, he said. If the board is not yet ready to discuss decommissioning the entire plant, I ask you to consider at least placing some upper limit on how much more of Cambria's money you will spend on it. The plant will blow through the next million in the coming months, what with an engineer earning about $200,000 and another needed to not operate the plant, projected costs of brine waste disposal at perhaps another half million dollars, and expenses that ran more than 70% above estimates last year. Perhaps you could cap the expenses at another $5 million, another $10 million, at least commit to discussing alternatives to the plant at some financial point rather than simply continuing to pay millions of dollars while other needs go unmet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sigler, followed by Mr. Gray.
Good morning again. Anybody who takes time even to read headlines knows that California is struggling statewide with water issues. As we debate what to do, ranging from building massive new dams to digging 35-mile tunnels, constructing resource-consuming desalination plants, and any other possible solution, it's becoming abundantly clear that conservation and reuse are the most environmentally sustainable solutions. Cambria is a leader in both. Our community is well-known for some of the lowest per-person water use statistics in the entire state. We know how to conserve. That's talk we are walking. But true sustainability requires a supplement to nature's supply to buffer against dysfunctional measures during extreme droughts. Thank you to the CCSD for building the sustainable water facility. With it, we are also a leader in water reuse. I'd like to take this opportunity to urge all Cambrians who support water security to write the Regional Water Quality Board, Control Board, supporting the revised monitoring requirements for waste discharge for the SWF before the March 10 deadline for public input. And I'd like to thank the CCSD Board and staff for excellent work arriving at the point where the regional board supports our revised plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gray. Followed by Ms. Maher.
Good morning again. I just want to briefly talk about the item that's actually on the agenda and what it means because I don't think we want to, this is about the project per se. It's about the action that's being contemplated by the Regional Water Quality Control Board and based on its staff recommendation that basically removes a very important barrier to operation of the plant when you, when and if you choose to use it. The bottom line that I see it in this report is that the Water Board staff has given the CCSD a vote of confidence here because they say that you are, you know, you are now allowed to use this, the new system of brine disposal that has been developed to replace the pond. That removes the one hurdle that was sitting in front of the plant operation, you know, the next time it has to be used. Without brine disposal, it can't be run. And the other, the rest of the staff report essentially acknowledges changes that have been made to the operation, for instance, the 400 gallon per minute pumping, which is actually, goes back to 2014 at the first tracer test. That was already, it's already been, it's been operated in that fashion all along. And I think the very good news in this is that the, not just that the brine disposal system that you, that the board has and the staff have developed is approved, but also that your reporting requirements are, have been relaxed in recognition that since 2017, the CCSD has been doing a good job actually in reporting and complying. And finally, there's a statement that, which I think is a, you know, again, is a statement about how the CCSD has been operating and complying, that the, and it's on page 18, paragraph 50, the Water Board explicitly finds that the project will not have significant adverse impacts on the environment as long as the mitigations and the ACIR and so forth carry it out. And then adopting this order, the Central Course Board approves the project. In other words, they're endorsing the project, they're endorsing your operation of the project through this statement. So I think in terms of what you would do, I don't see any reason for anyone to vote negatively on it because they're simply permitting you to do something. They're not forcing you to do something, they're not making, you operate the project, they're simply saying, you guys are doing actually a good job now. And I like, I like to change an attitude, I like to change an atmosphere, and you should not look a gift horse in the mouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maher, followed by Ms. Dickinson.
Good morning. I want to urge the CCSD Board to fully support the Regional Water Quality Control Board's order, the title of Waste Discharge Requirements and Water Recycling Requirements, the item we're discussing. So this order includes a lot of detailed engineering data that I do not completely understand. However, I can see that there are four key points. Number one, the Water Board staff agrees with the proposed method of brine disposal, of trucking it offsite to an appropriate disposal facility. This disposal method meets all environmental and safety concerns. Number two, the waste generated by the water treatment facility is not toxic. Number three, all required monitoring reports have been submitted on time since, excuse me, January 2017. Hats off to the CCSD staff. And number four, the bottom line is that the Water Board order approves the water treatment facility, assuming that the environmental impact report and the adaptive management plans are followed. This order is an important step for Cambria to operate our water treatment facility. Excuse me. Please fully back the diligent efforts of both the Water Board staff and your own staff and support this order. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dickinson.
Thank you, President Pearson. Way back, and I've really been following this project with the agencies for a very long time, since the onset. I was the one that proposed an offstream storage reservoir with Clyde Warren. We did a workshop on it for a capacity of 600 to 700 acre feet. I checked with the state with funding. I checked with the planning department at that time, who said if the board, if your board could do something, we could get this done in two years. I checked with the Coastal Commission. They said, this particular property does not have the ESHA issues. It was a dry, it is a drywall canyon, not a blue line stream. Just imagine with winter pumping, the kind of water we could have as security. But no, the district did not want it. They wanted a bracket, what they wanted was a D cell project at Shamal Park, but they didn't get it. And then they came up with this project. When I followed with the DDW years ago, after the district did the tracer tests, the district engineer projected we would get an 80%, 90% return. What we indeed got was a 50% return. So when you look at, you know, 250 acre feet and you're getting a 50% return, trust me, you will not get 250 acre feet. And I have that document from Kurt Souza at the DDW. The district, so the regional board is not saying that you cannot operate this without their permit. You can operate the facility under the emergency CDP. That is, you have to go into a drought, we'd have to be in a drought-free condition for you to turn that plant on for drinking water. It is not the SWF as C4H2O members can keep talking about. It is not. They asked with the Prop 84 funding, it's referred to as the emergency water supply. In the board's report now, today, that we're looking at, the regional board, it is referred to as the emergency water supply project because that's what it is, and that's what it was intended until some folks decided to change the name of it. Good luck with that. And the other, so I'm just going to say that for as far as brine storage and waste being disposed of, the district has a permit with the South Sand District in Oceano. They have that, it's current. They paid for it last year to be updated, it's current. I checked with them yesterday, it's still current. So if you have to, and I can't see why there'd be any reason for quite a while to even dispose of brine waste, we're still decommissioning the pond, and there's no need for additional water. So you could, but if, say, this scenario were different, there are two Baker tanks. One could be used for the decommissioning of the pond, and the other one could be for the brine waste storage then to be trucked to Oceano. But there's been no EIR done on the trucking of it to Oceano. It would require, in my opinion, and I would think some of the agencies, a separate EIR. So I don't have any more time. Am I over time now?
Yes.
Oh dear. Okay, I apologize. But those are my thoughts. I mean, you know, get the facts, really get the facts, and if you don't have all of them, I can supply you with some of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Richards.
I have a handout for the board. So first off, Les Richards, resident. So Tom Gray was our media expert on the project, and I'm kind of shocked that he said the number was stuck in 2014 because that number was established after we failed the first tracer test. Prior to that, it was 456. So the action, then we went to like a 406, and now this is the 400. But prior to the first failure, we failed the tracer test because the water got across the field too quickly. So that number has been around, bouncing around 400 because it's our way of actually doing the second run of the project without failing and the SS2. Okay. The 800-pound elephant in the room. As of May 2019, RWQCB, EWS Project Perimeter Opener, our injection ratio into R1W1, the injection well, will be officially locked down at no more than 400 GPM. This is down from the original proposed 656 GPM and equates to an overall production ratio loss of roughly 15%. My numbers are rough estimates here, I just want to give a heads up. So instead of the 240 to 250 total AWTP water production into wellfield, we will be down to 190 acre feet respectively. Then, when you calculate the 50 to 60% downstream loss ratio because R1W1 injection well has to pump upstream to SS1, 2, and 3, grand total water production for AWTP to Cambria Community is between 70 and 80 acre feet of total water over a six-month emergency operational window. As of May 10, 2019, we will be officially non-compatible with the deliverables required by the $4.2 million IRWM grant agreement. And I gave you a copy of the DOF, Division of Finance Audit Conclusions for May 4, 2018, stating, finding, their stadium here is, the finding is, finding number two, non-operational project. Although the Cambria Community Service District, a local project sponsor, completed advanced water treatment plant in accordance with the grant agreement, fourth plant is currently non-operational, specifically Cambria received a $4.3 million grant since they were funding. Now, what they're discussing here further down, according to the regional board, the inundation of surface water caused a cease and desist order. The Cambria's plan involves ultimately abandoning the evaporation pond.
Point of order. Yes. I don't understand how this is addressing the item that's been right in front of us.
Okay, my time is being run out by Cindy Seidel right now, so.
Go ahead. Point of order.
Recommendations. This is the recommendations for the Division of Finance to County of San Luis, who, by the way, we have an agreement to pay those funds back written by Jerry Gruber from 2015, August 19, saying we would identify the entire County of San Luis for the $4.3 million. So we're responsible for giving that money back, or portions thereof. Recommendations, monitoring Cambria's efforts to comply with the regional board's cease and desist order and modification of the plant, and two, after plant modifications require Cambria to test whether the new plant can produce the requisite 240 to 50 acre feet of water over a six-month dry period and report the results of its testing to the District of DWR. The district is the San Luis IRWM. Then we have a response back from County of San Luis stating, response to finding to non-operational project. The district agrees that the Cambria Community Service Emergency Water Supply Project is currently non-operational, and they are working to modify the facility. And the agreement here is that the district, that is this IRWM, County of San Luis, is responsible for reporting. The district is committed to taking all access necessary to satisfy its obligations under the grant agreement, including those set forth in paragraph 20 relating to operation maintenance of the project. Upon modification of the facility pursuant to the grant agreement and the district's related funding agreement with CCSD, the district will direct CCSD to test and report to the District of DWR that it officially can achieve the benefits stated in the grant agreement. So that is part of what's happening at May 10. We're locking ourselves down to this, which means we are committed, and we have to prove that it does through 30 to 50, which it can't with the new operational criteria. Thank you.
So the item is under consideration here just as FYI for us. And on March 10, if we wanted to make any comments to the regional board, that was the deadline. So that's why we put it on the agenda, so we could discuss it. The staff feels there's no reason to make any comment. I feel there's no reason to make any comment, but I'm more than willing to listen to the rest of the board to see what we've got here. Anyone want to add anything? Director Rice.
I want to make sure that I understand the purpose here. This is, the hearing that's going to happen in May is about changes that we've actually made to the project, like the change to the brine disposal and closing the pond. And it also includes eliminating the permit that was required to operate the pond. So those three, are the three changes, and this gives the board an opportunity to say whether or not, as a board, we are supportive of the changes that the regional board is suggesting need to be made. And I, in that sense, I think it's important that if there is any concern or questions on the part of the board about this report or the hearing, that we make it clear as a board that that's, that that's the case. Because we didn't have this the first time that it came through, come to the board for us to make those kinds of comments. And I think it's important that we do make some statement or other along those lines. I also want to respond to, just briefly, Mr. Gray said that the reporting requirements were relaxed. They weren't relaxed, they were reduced, and the reporting is about monitoring for the safety of the water for public consumption. So no matter how many tests we have to report, if we're monitoring due to the requirements of the regional board, that's not just because they don't want the project or they think it's unsafe, they want us to monitor to protect Cambrians who use water, which is all of us. And so I just wanted to make, maybe it's a distinction without a difference for some people, but I think it's not about relaxing, it's about reducing based on years of doing some tests that say, okay, this one's not really necessary because it turns out that it's not, it's always going to come up zero, or it's always come up zero so far. They also support it as long as we implement the mitigation measures in the SEIR, which is a really important point that I don't want to gloss over. I am glad they endorsed the project. Was super happy to see that sentence in there. I also noticed, though, that it was conditioned on as long as we implement those mitigation measures. So we need to be monitoring our staff and making sure that's happening. I have a couple of questions. There's a, in the reopeners section, if you look at number one under the reopeners, this is maybe just a legal term. Page is maybe just a legal term, page number 282, yeah, 282, re-opener number one, in the binder, but page 25 of the document, the last sentence says, or the application of an attenuation factor? What's an attenuation factor? Do we, is there anybody who can answer that question? I mean, it may be possible that we don't have somebody here that can answer it.
What I can state is the idea that there is a re-opener is common in, I mean, it's basically a practice in waste discharge requirements. There's some other conditions before that that speak to why do they have a re-opener? Under six on page 21, provision number one, injection of the advanced-treated recycled water shall not cause or contribute to an exceedance of the water quality objectives in the groundwater. So if through the operations of the facility, there are unanticipated issues that develop or if the Regional Board decides that they need to modify the water quality objectives of the basin, then they're going to maintain that right for a re-opener. You know, attenuation generally speaks to the issue of how do you mitigate? So I would say that, or the application of an attenuation factor could be the idea that there's mitigation measures. Are those mitigation measures working or are they not working? And do they need to have a re-opener? Because sometimes those things that we anticipate will mitigate a particular project don't always work out. So I think in terms of attenuation and mitigation, they're kind of, you know, working those. They're probably not using the mitigation word because when we look to SEIRs, you talk about specific things like mitigation. So they use a different word like attenuation to make sure it's as broad as possible so that they can justify, you know, a re-opener whenever they might so deem it necessary.
Thank you, that's very helpful. I, other than that, I don't really have any questions on this. And I think that it would be a good idea after further discussion among the rest of the Board, that we do take a position as a Board that we support this report and the hearing to make the changes that are required under the regulations.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Director Howell.
Thank you. First, a couple of, can I be heard?
No.
No? Can you hear me now?
Better.
Hmm, there we are. If I may ask Mrs. Heinrich a question. Mrs. Heinrich, the document you were quoting from and you were giving some page numbers, could you remind us what document that is?
That's the staff report that accompanies the order.
Oh, which we don't have in front of us.
What page?
We do, what?
Our staff report.
Our staff report, yeah.
It's not what, when, okay.
No, this is the Water Board's staff.
It's the Water Board's staff report, which we don't have in front of us.
Yeah, I do.
I don't. It wasn't in the packet?
It wasn't?
No, we can send it to the board right away.
What we've got is their order and.
Yeah, that's the, the order is their staff report for now. And then they're issuing.
President Pearson, separately, they are publishing a staff report.
But that's not until April 29, according to the order.
It's out there. It's on their website.
Yeah, it's on the website.
Okay. All right. The order talks, I'm sorry.
So.
The order talks about a staff report that they will issue on April 29. The draft report must be from the June thing or something. So, no, I don't, I don't have that either.
That's why I was wondering, because we were getting page numbers and I couldn't relate them to, so thank you. So presumably that's the draft staff report?
Right.
Thank you. And which is available, I understand, somehow. Okay. Yes, I tend to agree with what Director Rice has said. I think we do need to make a positive statement. On the one hand, on the other hand, I don't see that we really have a choice because short of mothballing the facility, if we're going to run it, it seems to me we are going to have to follow these requirements. So, and since no one is proposing to mothball it, at least nobody up here, it seems reasonable that we should go forward and positively express our agreement with the report. But I do have, I think that we might want to take a look at the two paragraphs that Mr. Schwartz brought to our attention. I do think perhaps we might ask for a change in the wording there, or at least I'd like to hear it discussed a little bit. That would be paragraphs 21 and 24 of the report.
About the hours of operation.
What page is it on there?
265 to 266.
So starting with 21, yeah, is 265 at the bottom of the page? I think it kind of bothers me that this is stated in the present tense. Right now, it's not typically operating at all. So I don't know that that's really, I think the wording could be a little better.
If I might ask for clarification on what paragraph are we speaking?
Page 265, number 21.
Time and hour of operations?
I would, I would say is expected to operate or something, but.
So one of the things I might politely try to remind your Board, and certainly understand that there is a lot of important points from public comment, but the effect of this item really starts with the actual waste discharge requirements, which is on Agenda Item 276, page 19. That's the order. Everything prior to that is background information. And I think the Regional Board probably did its best efforts in terms of speaking to a lot of different issues on background and operations. But the reality is, is that we're looking at pages, starting on page 19 of the Regional Board's document, page 276 of the Agenda Item. And a lot of the things that were both spoken to in terms of public comment and some of the other items that people might question in terms of the details or how it's worded prior to page 19, is really just background information. It's the order itself that starts on page 19 is really the focus of the Agenda Item. And so, you know, at your Board's pleasure, I can respond to some of the public comment. But I think if your Board's going to comment on something specifically, the Regional Board's going to want to see it focused on the order itself and on page 19.
Yeah, I don't think we, it may be in conflict with other documents that are out there, Director Howell, and so we don't want to go back and open up all of that. So I would just, I would recommend that we either make a positive statement about the order and agree with it and leave it at that or not, one way or the other.
President Pearson, if I, if I might, having been on this Board during this entire process and not having the former district engineer here to answer some questions, my recollection, and please correct me if I'm wrong here so that I can have it right, is that things like the six months, because I asked about that when this first came through, six months, eight hours a day, you know, five days a week, that that's the limitation, that's what they expect it to be running if it's going full bore, but we are entitled to run it far less than that, including not at all. The order is about running it. And so that and the injection, the injection studies regarding the tracer test, all of that was evaluated prior. And as Mr. Ogren indicated, those things are not what's under, under the changes. And it's meant to provide, here's what you, here's what we kind of expect if it's going all the time and what's going to happen in terms of how much water can be reinjected safely and the limitations of all the different regulatory agencies. I understand that wording may not feel right for how it's being currently operated, but it's about having something that we don't have to come back to multiple times to make changes to. I think, if I'm, please correct or elaborate if that's not right.
You know, I think that another area of, you know, wording that I see that could use clarification, but I don't think it's worthy of commenting, is the terminology "non-operational." We know that it's not being operated because the water supply situation doesn't warrant it. We're not in that emergency status. And some of the recent update that we've been, the facility is in standby mode. One of the members of the public commented that if, in fact, we had to turn it operational right now, we would be able to adjust the use of the Baker tanks. Or in theory, you could bring in another Baker tank. But the idea that, is it that it's non-oper, the non-operational status creates a semantics that it's not capable of being operated, and that's not true. It's in a standby mode. And so those types of things, I think, are, you know, they're often important for communities to discuss and what's the true status and whatnot. But in terms of that type of language within, you know, the background sections of the report, you know, I wouldn't get into commenting on those details. Again, focus on what the actual waste discharge requirements are. And if I might, just for a second, you know, it's pretty clear not to exceed 400 gallons per minute. Doesn't mean necessarily we could get to 400 gallons per minute, but we can't exceed 400 gallons per minute. Under the general requirements, it's not for direct human consumption because the state is working on plans where you have direct potable reuse, but that's not this type of a project. Works back into, as some have already commented, compliance with the conditions in the SEIR. It also includes the requirements of the Division of Drinking Water because we have two different regulatory bodies that really, you know, have jurisdiction over the facilities. One is the Regional Board and the other is the Division of Drinking Water. So it makes sure to incorporate DWR, the requirement to comply with D to W R requirements as well. And of course, the re-opener provision is one that is always in there just in case things happen that aren't anticipated. So I certainly, you know, made sure to take notes on a number of different items that the public spoke to, and I know that many of those are important issues to the community. But with respect to the WDRs again, I don't see where we would have comments on the, on the specific waste discharge requirements.
Yeah, Director Howell.
Yes, I see the point. It's mainly remembering that words are important. And what concerned me is that it seemed to be stated as a fait accompli, that we have a running project and it is running, which it isn't, but it is capable of running. I have one other question and then I, could I, is it possibly in order that Mr. Ogren could answer some of the other, the public's other questions before we vote on this? Is that possible?
Sure.
The other question I have has to do with the requirements. There's a requirement in here that when the Baker tanks are being pumped out and into trucks, that there is adequate provision for a spillage. And has that been addressed? Are we, are we in a position now where we, that requirement will be met? Should we have to start trucking stuff? Do we have a place to pump out these tanks safely so that, should there be a spill, it can be contained?
You know, the, that we would need to talk with the chief plant operators about, but in general, that's not a very challenging issue. You know, you just make, example with diesel tanks for generators and there's a lot of best management practices that are already in place to make sure that spills are contained. One, you know, if you brought a truck in, you could put in temporary swales if nothing else, that if something got loose, then you could, you know, and then what you do is you bring in your vector truck, you would, you know, wash it a little bit to make sure you can suck it all up with the vector truck. But those best management practices associated with, you know, diesel at generator sites and other things would be the similar types of things that we'd be implementing.
President Pearson, I have a direct answer from the Regional Board regarding that. Can I, it's a sentence.
No, no, please.
It's one sentence and it'll answer that question that Director Howell, I asked John Rocky this question a few days ago and he answered it in two sentences. May I just share that with you guys who are talking about it? It would help to clarify what he's asking. I mean, it's two sentences.
No.
Wow.
Can, can, can we, are there, are there other questions that you did want?
Thank you, that's sufficient, I think.
Mr. President, I believe the Baker tanks are designed to have a spout that a truck can back into it and have them emptied into it.
Certainly they are. You know, we're talking about things like what happens if a hose leaks, other types of things. And here's the thing, is that if the Regional Board, or I should say, to the extent that the Regional Board is concerned about certain operational or applications associated with the facility, they will delve into the details of telling you exactly how you're going to do it. When they see something as being a lesser risk, then they're just going to tell you, make sure you don't spill, and they leave it up to us. And then if we don't do it, then, you know, we're exposed to fines. So there's multiple ways that, you know, spills can be contained. It's clear in the WDRs, they don't see that as being a big risk because if they did, they would be more directive on mitigation measures.
That's all I wanted to share with you was from the Regional Board. I don't understand why I can't comment on this.
Public comment is closed, number one. And number two, I can't just allow people to have conversations with the Board. This is our time to discuss. Please, Ms. Dickinson, you've had your chance. Thank you. So are we at a point where we want to go ahead and, I'll, oh, sorry, Vice President?
Thank you, President Pearson. So just a couple of items here that the public has talked about, and then I want to bring up something different. First off, this is a minor item, but then again, as has been mentioned by folks in public comment, you know, the staff, the district continues to call this the SWF, the Sustainable Water Facility, but in looking through the document from the Water Board, they continue to refer to this as an emergency water treatment facility. And since the permit that we got back in early 2014 is for, you know, an emergency facility for existing customers only and not for growth, perhaps the district could finally use that term in a more consistent basis at our end. I want to ask some questions with regard to the hauling of the brine, which we are having to do, you know, from the impoundment basin. So I just ask some questions and hopefully they can be answered by staff or someone on the Board for that matter. Is the brine, is brine currently being generated by the facility? Or we are just, are we just disposing of the brine that is currently in the impoundment basin?
We're just disposing of the brine in the basin. It's not running, so it's not creating any waste.
Okay. And so this brine is being hauled to what facility?
It's being blended seven days a week with the effluent to empty it. We can't haul until the winter is over.
A little bit of a clarification on that, too. It's estimated about once when there's about 18 inches of water left in the evaporation pond, then the concentration of brine is going to be sufficiently high that the blending operations have to cease and the trucking operations have to start. So that's an estimate, but the point is that every time effluent water is put into a Baker tank, the water quality is tested to make sure that it can meet the blending requirements for disposal. And when it can no longer meet it, then it has to start getting trucked off.
Is there any estimate at all as to how much this process is going to cost, cost the district?
There have been some recent estimates of the trucking costs that are going to be estimated. I think that those costs, though, assume the current volume, so we can certainly develop some estimates associated with that trucking cost will be once we get down to approximately the 18-inch level. And because most likely that would start. And because most likely, that would start in next fiscal year, we had been anticipating developing those estimates for the 1920 budget.
I know you meant the 2020 budget. I thought it sounded like you said 1920, but I could be wrong.
Well, 19 -- it starts in 2019, ends in 2020.
Oh, okay, 19, okay. My mistake. With regard to an item on page 259, number 10, and I'm just going to -- I'll read this here, but I'm not going to mention the order numbers. So that's page 259, number 10, under Purpose of Order. "The discharge of wastes to the evaporation pond have been eliminated. This update reflects the changes made to operations in response to the evaporation pond closing, and details the addition of a treatment unit process at the facility." So this treatment unit at the facility, when is this going to be implemented? And what are the anticipated costs of this? And why is it being done? This is just, you know, for clarification for us on the board that might not know, or the public.
So with respect to that item, number 10, the -- where it states that the discharge has been eliminated, and that's the idea, the discharge from the SWF to the evaporation pond, right? Because we can no longer do that. And it then reflects to the addition of a treatment unit process at the facility. What I'm anticipating, but I did not go back and read those additional details, it's not additional treatment units, but in the overall treatment process, they, you know, we've put in the Baker tanks for the capture and the discharge, and that may be very much what they're referring to there. They're not -- to the extent that SEIR also talked about supplemental surface water treatment facilities, if that in the event that they might be referring to that, that's not covered by D to WR, it's not covered by the waste discharge requirements either. That would be something that would have to be addressed in a future date. There is some other language in here that was a little bit confusing in terms of speaking to requirements of an unconstructed facility, so those two might tie together again. We can certainly seek clarification on what they spoke to here, but clearly, in the waste discharge requirements, under the now-there-for's that they have, they're not providing, you know, any new facilities for us to operate.
I just seem to recall that in the past, I don't recall how many months ago it was, that there was a discussion about having to build, like it was said, an additional facility out there, you know, adjacent to where the pond is at this moment. And I felt that that's what this was referring to, this item here.
And, you know, again, we can follow up to see exactly what they're referring to, and we know that there has been included in the SEIR additional treatment facilities, but those are not covered by this waste discharge requirement.
Okay. If I could just make another comment? And hopefully, for those out there in the audience who feel like some of us on the board talk too much, I'm not apologizing. Thank you. So, you know, throughout this agenda item, especially in the lengthy document from the Regional Board, there's -- and obviously, we've known this for a number of years, you know, there's numerous references to the various chemicals that are used throughout the treatment process, the operation of the facility, with regard to the treatment of wastewater as well to create recycled water. You know, it seems to me that we have an obligation to Mother Nature, to the natural environment around us, to be more, how could we say it, more responsible in what we're doing on the planet, especially here in Cambria. This is one of the most magical places on Mother Earth. And I think that at this point in time, we as a community are obligated to consider ways of harmoniously living here in this community with Mother Nature. You know, water is this magical elixir that we can use for just about anything, from taking a shower to refreshing our body, to watering, you know, our plants and our vegetables. And water is a special thing. The idea that we're having to use chemicals for a plant that, as someone made in public comment, we haven't needed, and we obviously, we're not going to need it this year as well. I think we're in a very unfortunate situation, in a very unfortunate dilemma. You know, we're in the 21st century. This is a minor item, but, you know, the Chinese have finally decided, since they've been the main --
Point of order.
Okay, I need to wrap it up. So I'll just say this much, then, and my apologies. No, I'm not apologizing. I'll take that back. So I am going to encourage that we once again consider upstream storage, as we've done in the past, that we consider we, as a district, encourage the use of graywater systems by the residents in this community, the creation and use of wetlands, and pursuing grant funding opportunities to do these things as we move forward in the 21st century. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Very brief.
Director Rice.
And I would like to make a motion, but my brief statement is, since you were talking about hauling the brine, I'm sure that staff is already on board with letting us know what it will cost when, if the plant is running, what its kind of per gallon cost will be, because we will be generating brine, and we will have to truck it. So knowing that should help in determining the calculation about whether or not we run it, depending on how low we are in the aquifers and such. And so I look forward to getting that information down the road at some point. I know we're not there yet, but as you're evaluating the cost to truck the brine from closing the pond, those numbers probably will be helpful, because I think it's important, when we're considering when and under what conditions the plant is operating, we need to know how much it's going to cost us to do that, and whether or not the community wants to take that additional burden, or cut back on watering outside, or what other conservation measures need to be taken in the event of another drought.
Yeah, I think we have that information, because it was part of the 218 process. So if they could just refine that and let us know what that was. Because I think that was all run out based upon running it for two months, and how much that trucking and everything would cost us. So I think we had that information, and they can research and get it back to us, so.
I would move --
You would like to make a motion?
I would move that, as a board, we support moving forward in this change to the orders on our permit with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, this being the draft currently under consideration for May 9.
Okay. And staff, how would we go about doing -- well, do we have a second? Director Howell, seconds. How would we go about doing that? A letter from me?
That would be pretty much the common practice, is to authorize the president to work with staff and pen a letter underneath the president's signature.
Okay. So we'll get that done the next day or two, if we pass this.
And they're probably watching. I think it's good that we state that we're not changing course. This is, we're on this course, and this board supports this, the course we're on.
Good. All right. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Director Rice?
Aye.
Director Howell?
Aye.
Director Stidell?
Aye.
Vice President Farmer?
Abstain.
President Pearson?
Aye. All right. Four votes yes and one abstain. Moving along, we're now on the Board Member Committee and Liaison Reports, and the first one will be Director Stidell giving us an update on the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee met, established the election of officers, with Mr. Seager being vice chair and secretary, which he was very kind enough to volunteer to do. In terms of conducting the regular business, we established ad hoc committees for taking a look at the goals and objectives, another for defining the mission statement and the bylaws, and there was a third, which I'll address in a second. The major business in that activity that we went through was consideration of the mid-year budget, and there was an action that was brought to us by the staff for consideration of an option for handling the wastewater treatment positions, financial positions. And we made a recommendations of option three, which was brought back, and we discussed that as part of the board meeting last Thursday, of how that was taken and walked through. The third ad hoc committee that was established was an ad hoc to interface with staff regarding setting up the format for the Proposition 218 reporting analysis and format, so that that can be brought back and that we have an avenue for being able to use for review and commitment for rate applications or increases on a yearly basis. So its intent is to work overtime and provide that opportunity. And that was the finish of our business.
Okay, very good. Questions for Ms. Stidell? All right. Moving along, Policy Standing Committee?
We had an excellent first meeting. Gordon Heinrichs is the vice chair and will run meetings when I'm not there. I have volunteered to take the notes in the minutes, and thankfully, we have somebody on staff who's going to give me a list to make it a lot easier for me to take down those action notes, because we're just doing action minutes. We had, we appointed an ad hoc committee of three of the members to go back and look at the bylaws, the potential bylaws for the committee, and talk about the goals and the scope to bring back next month. This is a brand-new committee, so there's a lot of discussion, including the Policy Committee wanted to ensure that we are working on the things that the board wants us to work on. The understanding that many of the members had was that we were going to look at and review the policy manual. Well, there isn't a policy manual yet, so that's one thing. But having a policy handbook and having that be the sole purpose of that committee seems like then we would just have an ad hoc committee for a specific purpose. So, and my thinking, after we had our initial meetings in January of the board to talk about these things, was that we would also be looking at various things related to policy implementation and things that may be within the ordinances that do affect, that either are or are not in line with the overall district policy, and that would be at the board's direction. So they just kind of wanted to get some clarification about what the goal and scope of the board wants to have the goal and the scope of the committee be. Because we had, when I looked at the goals for the board for the year, one of the items was looking at the water conservation and the stage one, two, three that's in the ordinance, which needs to be revised to reflect the fact we're not really using the Southern Oscillation and all of the standards in there. But that's not policy. And so they really want to be clear on what it is that the board wants for them to undertake, and not get off onto side things like, what is our whistleblower policy with the staff? And is that being appropriately implemented? So I'd like to hear from the board, and I know my committee members would like to hear from the board about that, whether just getting a policy manual together, or if there's...
I think working on the policy manual and updating the policies we have should be your primary goal at this point. As far as attacking the stage one, two, and three, and all that kind of stuff, I think the CCSD, the CCC actually said that we should wait until we get our CDP before we look at that or farther along with that. So maybe we should wait on that one a little bit, but I have no problem with you, with the Policy Committee looking at what they would like to accomplish over the next 12 months, and coming back to us and say, we think these ordinances need to be looked at, and then we can give you better direction on that.
So not doing any actual work on the ordinances, but just kind of say, hey, these sections maybe are something that need to be reviewed? But actually, do gather and compile the various policies that exist and the policies that need to exist. And we're using the table of contents of the sample handbook from the CSDA as a jumping off point, just so folks know.
And I have an extra copy of that, so I can do that, too.
We would love to have that.
Director Stidell?
The only thing I'd add to that is that, as you're going through and making a review of the policies and what already is in place, if there are things there that are of a financial structure, we had had some discussion and agreement amongst ourselves that in those circumstances, that would be something that then you would parse out to the Finance Committee to take action for.
And part of the reason why I thought that we were doing it, in response to that, part of the reason why I thought we put the Policy Committee together is that Finance Committee didn't have enough time to look at the budget and the budget processes, because they were looking at vehicle policies and other policies related to finance. And I kind of thought that that's one of the reasons why this one was needed, so that the Finance Committee can look. And so are you saying that if it's related to finance, that we should look at it and then send it to you before it comes to the board? I just want to be clear.
My expectation would be that if it's something that's identified, and it's something, you know, something obvious like debt management, something that drives very singularly towards finance, that automatically, then you would move it from the Policy Committee and direct it to Finance. If there are, I don't, vehicle, you know, vehicle, policy on vehicle usage, you know, there may be financial aspects to it.
Well, every policy would, yeah.
But the reality is that it's more of, it's more far-reaching than that, there are more things to take in consideration. There may be some smaller financial pieces associated with it that you may want to ask a question of the Finance Committee, or direct something to them, but...
So like credit card policy, credit card use policy, you want us to push that over to the Policy Committee without doing much with it, just saying, here's where we are, we either don't have one, or here's the one we have? We need a priority of looking at it.
I mean...
I'm just trying to get clarification.
No, I was hesitating, because you said Policy Committee, so you said, did you mean push over to the Finance Committee? Oh, okay.
Right. If we're looking at the credit card policy, and so that's something that, because I'm trying to avoid the situation where you get piled on, because there's a lot of...
Right. And I think, in the case of a credit card policy, that generally there, you're talking about the controls and application use of the credit card, and there may be something that you would suggest as a limitation, or express some way in financial terms, and we can certainly, you know, just touch base, just touchstone it and figure it out that way. But it's a control mechanism as a policy, rather than a financial issue.
I just want to make sure I understand the request.
Yeah. That's my perspective.
Okay. Director Howell?
Thank you. May I ask when the next Policy Committee meeting is?
Yes, I believe it's on March 28th, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, thank you. So the next Policy Committee will be meeting after the next board meeting?
Yes.
So may I offer a suggestion?
Which is why I'm asking now. Which is why I'm asking now.
Yes. It seems to me this would be an appropriate agenda item, actually, because I have policies that I would like to see addressed, and I'm sure others do, but maybe it ought to be brought forth in a more formal forum and where the public may also have a chance to comment, or, I mean, I can tell you now, but it seems to me maybe it would be better...
Well, that's why we established the committee, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I don't, I don't want to get into it on this level until it comes back.
Well, let me just throw out a couple of things, then, that I do think it's appropriate for the Policy Committee to look at certain of the bylaws because they do, there are...
To review the board's bylaws.
There are policies enshrined in the bylaws themselves, and, and some of those perhaps ought to be addressed. In particular, I think it's Section 7, I believe, which is the interaction between the General Manager and the Board. And Mr. Carmel has presented me with a very nice revision that I happen to like, but that's just me, and I would like to have it discussed by others. So I would, I would like to pass that on to the Policy Committee if that's acceptable.
Well, I think, I think what we're going to do, where we are right now is getting the purpose and the scope and the goals for the committee for the year. And, and if what I'm hearing from, from Board members is a review of the board bylaws is something that, that should be there, then, then that's something that we could include in the scope, which would have to come back to the Board for approval because the, the committees don't have any authority except coming from the Board. So any additional things that you want to have included, what we, what we will have is a much more clear statement of the scope and purpose for the committee. And because we are a committee that, every single member of that committee has a clear understanding of the difference between policies and procedures and implementations and what kinds of things are appropriate for the Board and which kinds of things aren't. So we would, just wanted to ensure that we weren't overstepping what the Board was intending by doing things that were outside of putting together the policy handbook, which is going to get, take us more than a year, I'm sure.
Okay. In my opinion, almost anything would be fair game because it does come back to the Board in any case, so whatever the committee feels is appropriate.
But we don't want to be off somewhere where the Board isn't...
Right, correct.
Well, I, I would request that the bylaws be looked at, then, in particular.
Well, I, I, I thought we were going to just make that an agenda item for our next board meeting, number seven, paragraph number seven.
Oh, you want to do that? Okay, that's cool.
That's, that's going to be on the March 14th agenda.
Good, because that, yeah, I just did want to get that out there, but, okay, other than that, I, just other than encouraging the Policy Committee to be brave and, and attack the bylaws among whatever else they want to do, I'd be happy. And just like Director Seidel and I liaison between our two committees, I think it would be appropriate at some point for us to get together if there's anything that's germane for the resources and infrastructure. Thanks.
And vice versa from both, both of your committees, because there may be something that comes up in Finance or Infrastructure and Resources that would be more appropriate for the Policy Committee to dig into than for your committees because you have already a bunch of stuff on your plate. That was kind of the idea, is let's take some of that responsibility and spread it around.
I, I will add, although this isn't specifically to the Policy Committee, so I apologize, but I will add that the Director Howell and I had had a conversation to try to understand what the mechanisms might be between the exchanges of our committees. And in fact, we, we established our meeting dates so that the Finance would follow Infrastructure so that it would fit well as far as the process of budgetary actions. And for that reason, we're meeting on the fourth week of the month, and the Infrastructure Resource and Infrastructure, I'm going to start calling it RNI Committee.
I like RNI.
Meets, meets on the, the third week of the month, but I agree absolutely that just interchange of information, this would work.
Okay. All right, you got your direction.
I think we, I think we got the direct, is there, is there anything that Vice President Palmer wants, or you would like to make sure that our committee knows before we put together our scope and purpose?
The one thing that I would like is that, that the Policy Committee should write all the policies, and if it does, a majority of it deal with Finance, then you would hand it over to Finance. That way, they're all written the same way and everything, and the Finance Committee can then modify it as they see fit. So I think an initial run at it by your committee and then handing it over to them is the right thing to do.
That seems like it makes sense.
So that they're all in the same format and they're all in the same process. All right, Infrastructure and, or Resources and Infrastructure Committee report.
We met two weeks ago, I think, somewhere in the past. So we had our first organizational meeting, and Karen Dean was elected as Vice President or Vice Chairman, who will conduct the meetings when I'm absent. And Tom Gray graciously volunteered to be Secretary. We, we tried to have an election, but nobody stood up to it. I don't, so Mr. Gray will be doing the Secretary of Taking Action Minutes, and Paul Nugent volunteered to be an Assistant Secretary, should that job become to honor us. We did make some recommendations regarding the mid-year, that we passed on to the Finance Committee regarding the mid-year budget, and that was taken care of. Much of the, the discussion actually was looking more as trying to look a little further now into the future, and is what I hope that we will be doing. The mid-year budget having, it's now not in our hands, basically, so we will be, we're looking at next year for, and then trying to look at longer timeframes. I've suggested that we even consider things that are 10 years out, so try to get a, a general view of how things should proceed. The, we established our meeting times, they'll be in the afternoon at 3 o'clock on the, the Tuesday between the two board meetings. It's, it's late because some of our members couldn't make it earlier, so that's, but I'm announcing that so the public will, will know, save their Tuesday afternoons for, it's free entertainment. The other thing which we will be doing, we're just starting moving on this, is to get some tours going to, for our facilities. And what we will do, I'm hoping that if the staff has sufficient time, that we may establish some regular tours, which can be at certain times, and that the public will be encouraged to come and, and see. So where will be the wastewater, well, it's one obvious one, and the new water facility, which I will now call the Water Reclamation Facility because that's what it is. I'm sorry, I had to stick that in. So that's kind, those will be on, and so we haven't yet worked out the exact logistics of that in, in terms of how many people can be accommodated and how it was, and that it doesn't impact adversely too much staff time, but still try to get the public, so at least we know what we're all talking about, and it's concrete. I feel very sanguine about the, the whole process. I think it's going to, we have a good committee, and I think we'll, I think we can do good work.
Good, thank you. Yes.
Of course, I forgot something. It's kind of important, and I think we will need to agendize it however is appropriate. One of the committee members had to resign, she's having some additional issues that she won't be able to attend, so we need to appoint a new person, which means probably an application process. I don't know how the Board wants to go forward on that, but we, we did lose a committee member, she, she just can't continue. Lauren Younger, just, her, her health challenges don't allow for her to continue, so...
All right, yeah, I, I guess we're back to applications again, okay?
I don't know, do we have, is there?
Would we be able to just review the previous applicants?
Sure, let's do that first.
And make a recommendation from that? Because I know Jim Behringer had expressed continued interest.
Yep. All right, let's see if we have any others in, in, that were already applied, and if so, we can bring them back on the 14th and review those and maybe make a decision then.
Yeah, we'll review the list.
All right.
Dave, pardon, excuse me, Mr. President, I, I forgot, I wanted to ask our Vice President if she had anything to add to my report, may I do that? Mrs. Dean? No, nothing? Okay, thank you.
We have a request for comment from Ms. Dickinson.
I think as a member of the public who've always, I've always supported that we have standing committees versus a whole bunch of ad hoc committees that didn't just serve a purpose for three months, six months, but went on for years. That has been the practice of this CCSD. So I applaud the fact that we do have standing committees. However, as a member of this public who's shown a great deal of interest in what happens with our CCSD, I'm finding it overwhelming with the number of meetings that I might want to attend. So we already found out that one member of a brand-new, brand-new formed committee can't keep up. Well, imagine what it's like as a member of the community going to three standing committees and board meetings that are now in two consecutive weeks of the month. It's overwhelming, and I don't know how we can keep up with it. I would say that items that are really huge, and these, these are, have, some of these have been addressed in the past by previous boards, for example, the use of the vehicles. There was a policy made and voted upon that where, when that district vehicles could not go home with the employee with the exception of the on-call, 24-hour on-call duty employee in the water and wastewater departments. So that was never resolved, it just sort of just happened under the previous manager, general manager, that people could just do as they please, and he could put his RV out there at the wastewater treatment plant, hooked up to our utilities. All of this went by without any board action, or inaction, I should probably say. So that, the vehicles, the bank card, what my problem is, this needs to come before the Board. Some of these items shouldn't, shouldn't even be in front of the standing committees, they should come to this body that we expect to make these decisions for us based on comment from the public and advice and whatever, and you make your decision. But to have this much stuff be in the control of all of these standing committees, I'm sorry, I think it's gone way beyond what we thought it was going to be. You are our Board, and as such. Now, Director Howell made reference in his infrastructure report to the water project out there on Sansimian Creek, what, the emergency water supply, he called it the reclamation facility. So now I will read the one sentence since he brought this up from the Regional Board, re, from John Rocky. Read the use of Baker tank for brine storage. CCSD may use one of the Baker tanks they currently have on site for brine storage, provided there is secondary containment around both the tank and the area used to transfer brine to a taker truck, tanker truck. We want to make sure any potential spillage is fully contained. That's all I had wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The idea here is that the Policy Committee will draft up policies for us and revise policies, and then they will be brought to the full Board for the full Board's approval. They are not going to make policy and then not have it addressed by the full Board. So that's, that's the intent here, is to save the full Board some time in going through every policy, and Director Rice is going to do a great job of doing that. So, next up is the General Manager. Miss, well, we only got about five minutes. Oh, yeah. General Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'll just go over my staff report rather quickly and just some highlights. So we have met, staff has attended the three standing committees, and we will be appointing, or I will be appointing, just one staff member to attend. So for the Finance Committee, it'll be the Finance Manager, for the Resources and Infrastructure Committee, it'll be Mr. Ogrin, and for the Policy Committee, it'll be myself. So I did also want to mention that we did, again, we had the SDRMA liability and loss control program review and hazard identification survey. The management consultant did find a lot of positives in our facilities. Some areas did need some attention, and so our employees have been paying attention to that and fixing those various items. I do also want to mention the type of employees that we have here and how fortunate we are to have them. We have a lot of talented, hardworking, and dedicated employees. Some of them have received the operator certifications, which exceed the requirements required in their departments. They've, I did list them here, I won't go through them now, but it does allow for redundancy, licensure redundancy within the departments, as well as education for them to use in their departments. We also have met with multiple employees and reviewed the district engineer position, and we have decided that we do need to replace the district engineer position for multiple reasons, which I've also identified in my staff report, which include, but aren't limited to, the supervision of the water and the wastewater departments, reviewing and signing various regulatory reports, identifying and supporting the needs of the infrastructure, ensuring regulatory compliance, and preparing and managing budgets, including the capital improvement projects. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them as well. We are currently working on amending the feasibility study, and that leads me into a section that was inadvertently left out of our, of my staff report, which is in regard to a meeting that occurred at the SWF, and I know there's been some concern in the community as to what that was about. It was a meeting that we had with Cannon, and I'll let Mr. Ogrin comment on that after I just finished going through all of this, and I'm sure that he'll be able to answer any questions if you have any. So we also had some questions about the People's Self-Help Housing Timeline, their Intent-to-Serve Letter Timeline, which I have attached at the end of my report. It does also tell you where they are in the process, going through the permitting process with the county. We have, our chief plan operators are continuing to work on the quotes and the process to get the upgrades to the various lift stations and the SR4 well. We had, we did have some issues at the fire department, which they are working on. We did have a management meeting this morning, and we talked about with the current storm event closing in on us, that we are prepared for the EOC and the DOC, although I know that the chief has some concerns as to how he'll finagle it, but he does have some ideas, and he will pull it through if we need it. The water department did experience a theft of two batteries, which was out on the Van Gordon Creek Road. It has been reported to the Sheriff's Department, and they were shaking the bushes, as they say, well, that's what their deputy said. And it, this did happen at 2:30 a.m. When they were disconnected, our operator did receive a, a note, an alert, and then he received another one, I don't know, about 10 minutes later or so, so he did respond to the facility in a storm event, and he did discover that they had been stolen. And they are very heavy batteries, so it's speculated that there was a vehicle involved to transport them. I bring this up because I wanted people in the public to understand that these are some of the things that our operators are exposed to at 2:30 in the morning. So as I said, we have pretty amazing staff. Excuse me, we did finish the negotiations finally, when you approved the consent agenda with the IF MOU, which is great. We also continue to only focus on spending money on cap, I'm sorry, critical operations. We discussed that again this morning. And then, as you can see, we get a lot of work done every month, and their listing from all of our managers is below, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Director Rice?
Just really quick, there, it says, I'm looking at page 296, it says there was a power outage on Sansimian Creek Road that affected the northern section of Cambria, which caused a communication loss to the well field and the SWF. I thought we had emergency generators so that we wouldn't experience these kinds of...
Can you tell me which page you're looking at again?
I'm on page 296 at the bottom, and you may not have an answer, but I saw that, and I...
I think we might be talking about the same thing, what I just reported for the battery loss.
At the bo, no, no, this was like the, the northern part of Cambria was out of power. But maybe it's the same thing, and I just...
They do say a generator was put in service.
Right, I thought that that was part of the SWF, was some, some generators that are supposed to cover power loss.
So the connection is that it's the two batteries that I'm talking about before they were stolen. They didn't have enough battery, I guess, to, to sustain the facility, so they did put a portable generator on it, and they're suspect, they suspect that because... a portable generator on it and they're suspect, they suspect that because somebody noticed the, whatever the facility is with the generator chained to it with locks, that's what brought their attention to the facility and then they were stolen after that. But, so, to answer your question, there was a portable generator installed.
Because all that electrical equipment gets screwed up if it's not properly grounded, not properly, you know, power goes out, you've got to screw up your data system and...
Okay. Thank you. Vice President.
Thank you, President Pearson. A couple of comments with regard to the Acting General Manager's report on the first page here, 289, 1, 2, 3, paragraph four with regard to, after careful evaluation of the organizational structure, it's been determined that the district needs to hire a new chief engineer. You know, in the time that, that I've been on the board and would interact with Chief Engineer Gressons, he would constantly comment on, the majority of his time was being spent on the needs of the emergency water facility. And, of course, during this period of time, he was also using various consultants and, you know, to assist him in his duties while he was spending most of his time on the emergency water facility. I understand, and I do want to say this much, that we do have great staff. There's no doubt about that and the community should be very grateful for that at water and wastewater. But I might suggest that perhaps we wait until we hire a new general manager, considering the fact that the salary of a chief engineer is a considerable amount of money and we're pretty strapped for cash. I don't think that's any secret with regard to the district. So, perhaps we could wait until we hire a new general manager and have this person assess whether we need to have a full-time chief engineer or perhaps utilize the excellent staff that we have and occasionally have to perhaps hire a consultant for some of these issues that we need to address, but certainly not to the expense of, like I said, having a full-time engineer. So, that's one thought. And then second, with regard to the feasibility study and the district produced one, but, and there was one, I believe, produced by someone from the coastal commission and so as a result, I'll just read what it says here on page 290. We're currently in the process of amending our feasibility study. You just mentioned that. Our efforts are in response to recent calls with Tom Lester of the California Coastal Commission and Arlen Singelwald of the, and you say of the San Luis Obispo County, and I'll just add, planning department. So, this is maybe for edification for the community and for members of the board. What was the problem with the feasibility study that was produced by our hired consultant? What were the complaints from the state and the county with regard to what we produced?
There wasn't a problem. It was just that the CCSD had agreed to include something about the biological review from the coastal commission's biologist. So, that's what we did, was we amended it and added a couple of sentences regarding their report and a memo that there, or some little note that it's attached.
I'm unfortunately not, I don't have enough knowledge in my mind at this moment with regard to the differences between the feasibility study from, like I said, from coastal and from what we produced, but I think it was considerably more different than what your comments have just been, but unfortunately, I'm, I'm not privy to being able to discuss that at length. But I think it's still, it's an issue that we should be concerned about. Okay, I'm, that's it for me. I'm just curious, are we going to be, I believe Director Howell probably has a report from his attendance to the NCAC meeting and, you know, I also liaised on to a couple of meetings as well, so are we going to be doing those or just kind of pass over those? I know we're running short on times.
Yeah, we are, we are. And, yeah, let's, can we do that on the 14th? It's only a few days.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. All right, I do have a request to speak from Ms. Dickinson on this.
Thank you, President Pearson. Yeah, I do see on this page 290 that Director Farmer was referring to, we're currently in the process of amending our feasibility study. My understanding is that the coastal commission's been asking for in-stream flow studies, so when are those going to be addressed? The feasibility study, I have a big question mark. It was the in-stream flow studies. I do understand after, as I said, I do stay in touch regularly with agencies because I, of my distrust over the many years with this, with this district. So, I've learned that finally, finally, we are going to be getting our water licenses from the state water board as early as sometime this week. The draft licenses were sent October 30th. The district wanted to delete conditions from those draft licenses and they were told it would take up to two years to do a permit for change on those deletions that they wished. So, I guess the district decided, we'll go with what we've got, which is exactly the same amount in the diversion permits as we had prior to the new licenses. We lost a ton in both, in both basins, but they are what they are and it's what we've been operating with for a long time. As far as the district engineer, I see absolutely no need to replace Mr. Gressons. Whenever there is an issue that's come up, we have hired consultants from engineering firms just as recently as a couple, about a week and a half ago on Thursday, on a Thursday with a meeting that took place on San Simeon Creek Road and not as Ms. Madrid identified SWF. It was actually, and it could have been, the SWF as well, but they were all standing on San Simeon Creek Road outside the evaporation pond. So, I would like to, was it because of the lawsuit, were they maybe looking at the gradation of the road? Why were they there? I think the public has a right to know why they were there. What were they talking about? Why was Cannon there? And one more expense, but it, the district engineer was there. So, I'd like to know why Cannon was involved. Was, was it a legal issue or was it something else that they were discussing? I would like an answer to that. I would like to also know why we did not have the resource summary report in, in the agenda last month, but yet we get the regional board's report. I would like to know why Ms. Madrid said there was no communication from the planning department on the RSR, but yet she then said Mr., that Bob had reported to them that he had items of, on conservation and production. My understanding from Mr. Pradari...
Please.
From Mr. Pradari, that in previous times when I've commented on the RSR and the RMS is that they take the recommendations from the agencies, not as Mr. Carmel identified at the last meeting, from the planning department. They take what you guys send to them and that's what makes up the, so in a level of severity three, growth was the big item. So, did I go over again?
Yeah, well, not only, but you're addressing things that aren't in the report, so, thank you very much. Can we now have the finance manager's report?
Well, I think that's really unfair. I mean, gee, it does have to do with, with the administration.
Thank you, Ms. Dickinson.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Pearson, members of the board. So, my report is very short. I don't have much to report. Our big action was at last Thursday's meeting when we talked about the mid-year budget. Just a reminder that we did develop the ad hoc committee from finance to address a new budget model and some easier to read format for us as staff and also the public and we'll be having that first meeting this coming Thursday.
Good. Any questions for the finance manager or anything? No? Future agenda items, I think we have a number that we've already addressed. Does anybody have anything else that they need to have on the future agenda? Yes, Director Howell?
Okay, I understand that we are going to deal with the, next time on the, what, paragraph seven.
Yes, the bylaws, yes.
I think it would, it would be a good idea to at some point agendize the matter that Mr. Key brought up last time regarding a wording change to the transfer of development credits and the requirement that the, the linear street footage be not...
See, that, again, we have nothing to do with that. We really don't.
Oh, but we do have to do it in terms of the transfer of development stuff.
Well, I understand that.
And it is in our, it is in our...
Well, let's, let's direct that to the policy committee and let them look at that particular ordinance.
Good, I'd like to go on record as asking for that.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Would you send me the specific section so the, so the committee, yeah, thank you. I just have one quick comment. I apologize for my tardiness today and I just want to wish everyone a very happy Mardi Gras.
Anyone else have anything, future agenda item? Yes, sir.
Oh, is it, I am now sir. I've been downgraded from Vice President. At least sir, sir's not too bad, though. It's, it's an upgrade, you're right. This isn't necessarily an agenda item only because I know it would never get on the agenda. But my personal feeling with regard to where we spent the majority of our time today on the emergency water facility, my personal feeling and folks that I speak to in the community are seriously concerned despite a comment that was made in public comment earlier about me misrepresenting the cost of the facility. I'm not going to bother to get into rereading what was in the expenditure report and I am not endeavoring in any way, shape or form to inflame this issue. But I feel that we have, we as a board and a district, have an obligation to the ratepayers of this community as to being aware of the cost of this facility and that other, and that other than ultimately removing the brine, which is going to be a cost of some amount and paying our monthly bill or by yearly, semi-annual bill to buy this facility back from the bank, my personal feeling is, is that the board and the district need to seriously consider downsizing the amount of money that we are spending on this facility that hasn't run, that we don't need at this time, so we in one way or another can use those monies where they can be utilized for serious infrastructure improvements. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Director Howell?
This may or may not be in order. A couple of questions to staff. Tell me if, two things are not a question, an observation. There was tremendous confusion regarding the rate increase and how it's being reflected on people's bills. And I do note that in the last bill, we are still carrying the SWF operations charge, which is no longer to be done and that is a source of confusion for people and needs to be removed.
No, that's still...
It was on my bill.
No, but it's still supposed to be on the...
No, no, it's the one that we, that got eliminated.
But the neck...
It's the surcharge. There's two, there's, there's three charges. There's the, the base charge, the operations charge, which is based on your current water usage, and then what we are no longer doing is the surcharge when it's operating. That is still on the bill and needs to be removed.
Oh, oh, okay.
Because that is a source of tremendous...
It's on the bill, but there's no money attached to it.
Nor will there ever be, so it needs to come out. It's, it's the old, it was...
Need to read format.
It's a format, yeah.
We'll look into that, but it's, it's...
I know it's a hard job to do.
It's hard programming, so we would have to have a programmer remove it, but we'll look into it.
It's not urgent, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because it, as I recall in last, earlier discussions, there was considerable confusion.
We don't want confusion.
No, we don't need, we don't need confusion. Two, two other things. First of all, a compliment to the general, the acting general manager. I think she's doing an excellent job and I, I think the community needs to appreciate what you've been doing, so, and, thank you. Really, so regardless of, I may, I may express chagrin from time to time, but believe me, I would not want that job. It's way too big.
Well, thank you, Director Howell.
Yeah, we didn't see his name on the applications, in case you wonder.
I have not applied. And this is a question which doesn't need to be answered now, but do, is there a list of outstanding intent-to-serv letters? And if so, may I see that at some point?
I don't know if we have a list per se, but I think I have the information.
No, no.
We don't have time now.
Why don't you get that to Director Howell?
Yeah, we'll get you that list.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Thanks for indulging me.
Good. All right. Meeting is adjourned to closed session.